Call the meeting to order. Quickly, please, come on. Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Jule?
Yes.
Okay, everyone's here but Martha. There is one change in the agenda. You'll see that cross off down at the bottom of your page there. That was inadvertently put on by the state. So we just could disregard that item that's crossed off. Counsel, any other changes to the agenda? If not, let's take a motion to the consent agenda. Oh, I need to read it. Approval of the minutes of the August 9th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of August 20th, 2021 payroll in the amount $131,674.64. Consent of a park use permit for the Fairfield Cultural Alliance. Acceptance of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Economic Development Committee minutes. Acceptance of Library Board Committee minutes. Approval of liquor licenses for Asian folk bistro and Mike and Nicky's. Approval of claims in the amount of $408,127.40. And we had two claims over $75,000. Alltopper Inc., $116,242 for an excavator. And floor engineering, $84,517.77. And this is for the wastewater treatment plant. So now I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not this caller. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Jule?
Yes.
We will go to public forum and appearances. And we do not have Christine Essel today. We have Deb Book in her place. And also Brian Hunger came from the hospital. So we'd just like to hear an update. Give us a sense of where we're at in the county and what's happening. Because there's a lot of stuff in the news right now about COVID. So if you could just update us from your perspective. Give us, give the community a sense of where we're at.
Hi, like Hallie said, I'm filling in for Chris Essel. My name's Deb Book. And I've been with Public Health about 11 years now. And we are doing Could Do Better in Jefferson County. Right now, we are, for our county, we are, all the ones that are fully vaccinated, we're at 39.7%, which isn't great. It's not even half, but we're working on it. Because we did get some good news today. The FDA finally approved one of the vaccines, the Pfizer. The Pfizer was approved for ages 12 and up. They did approve it, the FDA approved it, for ages 16 and up. So it's still under the Emergency Youth Authorization, EAU, for the ages of 12 to 16. But that's kind of exciting because hopefully we'll get some more now that it's FDA. I think it gives people a much better confidence. And we're hoping that we'll get more vaccine that way.
Can you give us a little bit of demographics on the 39%? It's mostly older people, right?
Yes.
That are vaccinated?
Yes. And we're finding right now, those who are becoming positive, it seems to be in the 18 to 27-year-old ages. And yesterday, we had one positive. The day before, for Jefferson County, we had three. The day before, one. So they're just kind of trickling in, not real bad. They did make an announcement that they are recommending, the CDC is recommending that we have booster vaccines. And that is for the COVID, of course. Anyone who is immunocompromised, if they have had a transplant, if they are taking chemotherapy drugs, that kind of thing, then they can get their vaccine now. As a matter of fact, we have been giving them. But if they received it later, they're saying that as long as they received it within 28 days, then they are free to get their booster. Now, for those of us who are healthy individuals, they also approved a booster. And that is going to be for eight months from your last shot. So for like healthcare workers and any elderly people nursing home, there's what probably due coming up here in the next month.
Can you explain the 28-day rule of yours?
Right. So immunocompromised, they say if you, let's say you just had a double lung transplant and you can't fight infection well, or you're taking medications for anti-rejection of your organs, then what they recommend is to give a booster 28 days from your last one. But if you're healthy, you have a better immune system. You can fight things off. So they recommend eight months. Because they're, in the studies they've done, they're seeing about eight months is when the immunization kind of wanes down. So we're guessing most people around November will be due. Most of the people have theirs in March.
So people still have a response, it's just not as strong as they would like?
Right, right. Just from the studies they've done, they see that it kind of decreases. And that, we were hoping that they would combine the COVID and the back then the flu, but it looks like they're going to be separate. So, and those will probably be coming out soon too, the flu vaccine. It seems every year it gets sooner and sooner. Let's see. So as far as going back to school, the good news is we don't have to do any quarantining. We don't have to do any contact tracing now. If someone is sick, they're going to treat it pretty much like the flu. And let's say that someone comes down with symptoms. What they're saying is 12 or 10 days from when the symptoms began is when they can return to school. If they want to get a test and they test positive, then 10 days from the positive test is when they can return to school. If they don't want to get tested, they have to, of course, wait for the 10 days. But they also have to be fever-free without a fever-reducing medication and symptom-free for 24 hours.
Need a PCR test?
Yes, PCR are the most accurate. And there are all kinds of tests out now. We are doing one that is saliva. If everyone remembers Test Iowa, where you drive through to get a test done? Well, this is in place of Test Iowa. They're not having the drive-through anymore. You can just pick up a test kit and they are free. And we just hand it to you. We have them at the health department. And then you take it home. And you have to saliva spit in the tube. And then you just put it to a UPS drop-off. And once that hits the state hygiene club in Corvino, it's about 24 to 48 hours and you'll have results. And it's the accurate PCR testing. So that's been very popular. We order about 50 a day.
Anyone who's had it for free?
Yep.
A lot of people who think they've had it, but weren't very sick.
Right.
Curious.
Right.
So they go to, they go to public health and get that test?
Right. We just hand it to them and they can do it on their own time. I know people who do meditation at the dome. It's required that they get tested every week. And that's been kind of costly for people to have to pay for that every week. So they have been thrilled to be able to get that. And also, the university has been supplying the tests as well. So that's been great. Also, I'll let Mr. Hunger tell you about their drive-up. They opened that up again with testing. And the reason with all this testing is because just with the Delta variant, I'm sure everyone's heard of that. The virus has mutated. And Erin doesn't know about it, but it's mutated. So it's a lot stronger and more and more people are getting sick. They're finding that about 90% of the people who have becoming ill have not had their vaccine. So that's just one more reason that we really encourage you to try to get it. There are a couple house files that I wanted to bring up. And they were signed by Kim Reynolds on May 20th. And one was 847, and it prohibits the school from enforcing the policy requiring students to wear masks. Students are able to if they want to, but they are not forced to. There was another one also that talks about schools cannot ask for a COVID proof of immunization to be let in. And that was House File 889. And so kids do not have to prove that they've had a COVID vaccination and are able to attend school. And then back in February, the CDC issued an order that passengers and drivers of school buses have to have a mask on. And that's public and private schools. So now they still have to with the, no matter how long the ride is on the bus, which is going to be hard for kids at the end of the day to have to wear a mask. But they are requiring that right now. And schools are not obligated to do any of the contact tracing, which is nice for the school nurses. I'm sure they'll be very happy.
So, I just understand it. Drivers are required to wear masks. Children are not required to wear masks?
No, they are. Everyone.
They're all on the bus.
Students, drivers.
It falls under the public transportation.
I see, but not at school?
Right.
Once again, with us.
And the reason that is because that's a federal law?
Right. And then I think, I don't know if it's because it's more confined, you know? But then I think that some classrooms are kind of confined, so.
So can you tell us what the positivity rate is, or are you doing?
The positivity rate, let's see. The last one that I saw, it's at 14.8%.
It's a little low, I see.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So what they're saying is about one in every 12 people are testing positive. So.
How's that compared to last winter or last fall when we were?
Right, at the height. It's pretty much the same.
Okay.
Chris and I were talking about that earlier and it's pretty parallel, which we hope at this point it would be a little bit better. But just because of the variant, that's what's the problem.
So imagine people were resisting being tested because they were afraid of losing time at work and losing their paycheck.
Right.
Are you still seeing that?
Not so much, because they, they're not really requiring quarantine. So that's not such a threat to people. So they're more apt to get tested. A lot of people want to know because they're not penalized unless they do have symptoms. So we're finding, and then it's so much easier to get testing now. You know, just like pick them, you know, up at the health department or that kind of thing. Let's see. So we were in the mindset that we don't want to waste any doses. Once we open a vial, it's 10 doses. And so we have to give that within six hours. So now we're going to have to switch to the mindset that we have a lot of vaccine. Even if we get one person that comes in and no one else the rest of the day, we have to try to get that person vaccinated because that's one more person. So that's been kind of hard. Tuesdays and Thursdays are the days that we are doing the immunizations for COVID at the health department. So we have Moderna right now. And that's the two dose. You get one and then for 28 days later, you get the second. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's the one and done. And a lot of people, we have given like in the factories and that kind of thing. They just want to be done. We don't have that right now in Jefferson County, but some of the surrounding counties have quite a bit. Let's see, I know Henry and Washington and Van Buren, they all have quite a bit. So we've been encouraged to borrow rather than signing out more vaccine. And Brian can tell you a little bit about that as well.
One question for Public Health.
Sure.
Are you hopeful that you're going to get any more people getting a vaccine who have it at this point? It's available, it's free, everyone knows it's there.
Right. We are very hopeful.
Hopeful, but realistically hopeful, do you?
To speak to an idea, in the last three weeks, we've done 12 new people.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, so it's not great. But maybe with FDA approval, that'll give people a little bit more confidence.
Make them a little more secure, sure.
But that's not Moderna, right?
That's the Pfizer.
Right.
Yeah.
That's not the right, not the right vaccine you're putting out.
But maybe, you know, since that got FDA-approved, we're hoping, you know, some of the other ones will.
I believe Moderna's also on track to be FDA-approved as well. From what I've read about it.
Yeah, they're hoping like by September, October.
That was my second question, Eric. Is Public Health expecting another surge as people start to move indoors?
Yes. And going back to school. And after the state fair, there are million people there.
I just read, I read an article that already there's some, seeing some increases in the children who go to school bringing it back.
Right, right. And now it's like the parents are working. So now you have the grandparents who are older and more vulnerable. And they're the ones babysitting and then they're getting it. So, yeah, it's just, we wonder if it's ever going to end. But at least it's job security for our department. So we're thankful tonight.
Thanks, yes.
So thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work, all this last year and a half.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, it's been challenging, particularly on certain days. And been a lot of work right now. So Brian, you want to give us a quick update on what's happening at the hospital? Anything new or you think we need to?
What's your last question? Yeah, I can give you really quick. But I, I always enjoy, you know, talking about the hospital and what we're doing there and the great job our staff does. When we, I think what Debbie talked about is pretty much what we're seeing. I'd say as far as this surge, I think it's already started. I think that was the question. I think we're seeing numbers that increase nationally in the states and locally. We, we look at a couple of different factors. One is we look at the hospitalization rates throughout the state. Make sure, largely make sure there's enough beds available for patients who need them. So we are participating in a regional hospital discussions about bed availability. It's happening weekly. And that includes IOCC, Rapid Squad Cities, Birmingham, and every hospital between. And so as of right now, we're actually sitting in a decent position with the number of beds available. Interesting to note that I know there's a couple of questions about some percentages. As out of the individuals who are hospitalized, 79% of them are unvaccinated. So these 21% of any, throughout the state are vaccinated. Out of the patients throughout the state that are in the ICU level, which is the sickest of the patients, 86% of those patients are unvaccinated. So it definitely gives warrant to the value of being vaccinated and the protection that it can provide for our citizens. The other thing we look at is outpatient-wise, what we're seeing in clinic and what we're testing at the CDC. We've definitely seen an increase in the number of tests being ordered. We've seen it tripled in the past recent weeks. We've opened, as mentioned, we've opened up our, put our test shed back in so that we can have people go through as quickly as possible and minimize the exposures inside. But we've seen an increase in the number of positives that are coming back. Last week, our positivity rate was 20%. Patients are being tested in the clinic. And, and once again, out of that positive group, 85% of them were unvaccinated. 15% were vaccinated. So the, the last thing, of course, we watch is our staff. Making sure that we have the staff that we need to provide the care that's being asked of us. And at times, that can be a struggle. Because as a small, smaller organization, you know, we don't have a buildup of reserve staff. And so when you have a couple that go out, it can really cause stress in any of the departments that you have. But our staff are doing good. They're resilient. And as far as the vaccine booster came up, we haven't talked about that at the hospital level. I'm sure at some point, we will be involved in participating in that. We're continuing to provide the vaccine for free to anybody who wants to come get it. We would really encourage anybody who had questions about the vaccine to please feel free to ask.
What vaccine are you providing?
We have Pfizer.
Pfizer.
Yep. Ask a professional, agree with your provider, we're much public health. We'd love to provide information about it. And then I think that's the base of your call. And unless there's any questions. Okay, thank you, guys.
Great, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it a lot. Okay, and we then will move on to our annual library report at backup.
So I'm going to start with our general fund. This is money that comes from the city to cover our operating expenses. And our revenues were much lower than anticipated for obvious reasons. So we really tightened our belts this year. And I ended up saying no a lot. But we did manage to offset that shortfall. Going on to the memorial fund. We ended up bringing in grants from the library's foundation for library materials. And Paul Prather, who owns everybody's Whole Foods, has actually matched the city in terms of revenue for library materials. He's been sending a check every month for $500. And we've been using it to buy library materials. We also have interest income coming in from our old endowment fund that was established way back in the 1950s. The interest income on CDs is lower, much lower than it was when I first came into this role. But it's still making a nice positive difference, bringing in almost $7,100 for, again, for library materials. So the memorial fund is used primarily for library materials. If you look down at the bottom at dispersments, you'll see over $44,000 going in for that. There is an adjustment showing under dispersments in the amount of $14.46. That's a result of the auditor coming and looking at our records and telling me to switch that money from the endowment fund. Let's see, it would be from the memorial fund over to the endowment fund. So it was a wash. And I'll, we'll get to that in a few more pages. Looking at the book sale fund. This is revenue that we generate primarily from book sales. There'll be people in the library.
I'm sorry, memorial fund, the balance on July 1st is $6,416. Is that?
That's right.
Okay.
Uh-huh. And so that was the ending balance at the end of fiscal year 20.
Okay, and where, how's this, how does this fund work again? You said it's the interest of a principal?
You have revenue that we generate independently. So some examples are Adopt an Author. That's where a patron says, okay, I want to pay for books that my favorite author publishes.
So that total for account is the total amount that this fund collected in the last fiscal year?
Including the $6,416 that we started with.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to the book sale fund. We use this fund to cover the cost of programs and events. It's something that our patrons all expect us to do. We have six book clubs going on right now, for example. And special events for children. And that isn't something that's covered by our normal operating budget. And so we, we work to generate revenue to put into those kinds of expenses. So you can see there's been quite a bit of grant writing. I wrote a grant that was successful for laptop computers. Greater Jefferson County Foundation awarded $3,000. And we were able to purchase Dell rugged laptops. And that came in really handy during the worst part of the pandemic, when people weren't coming into the building. They could borrow a computer and take it home. Alex, our new youth services librarian, has done a fantastic job of doing grant writing. And he's working on programs for teens and tweens, thanks to an ALA grant in the amount of $3,000. And you can see the other ones that he used for summer reading program. And of course, the expenditures are broken out below. Programs for adults, youth, all ages. And there you have the Dell rugged laptops. And we also instituted mobile printing. So during the pandemic, when people weren't coming into the building, we were reinventing the way we delivered services. We were doing a lot of curbside delivery services. And we also subscribed to mobile print. So anyone can submit print jobs from home, from their cell phone, from their home computer. And those print jobs will go directly to our printers in-house, where either the staff can release them and deliver them curbside, or you can come in and pick them up. Going on to the capital fund.
Sorry, one more question.
Yes.
Because you weren't able to have book sales, are you on hold on wanting more used books? I have a whole box.
We are happy to receive them. And we have been doing book sales the last few months. They're smaller and shorter and more of them.
Okay.
And so that way, we can have things socially distanced. But we're doing it.
I'll bring my box over.
Do you do that every day, or is that something that's every few weeks?
We wait until we have enough inventory to fill about 50 boxes in the same type of book. So for example, we're going to do a nonfiction book sale, let's say. We want to have 50 boxes worth of inventory. And then we set up 10 tables and put five on each one. Or five tables with 10 on each one. So we're just doing it smaller and more often and further apart. But we're still doing it. Okay, moving on to the capital fund. That's basically a placeholder. It used to be the money that was collected for the construction of the new library. And then when that money was expended, it just became a placeholder, basically. About $84. You have the library endowment fund, that's page. And we have roughly half a million dollars in there. That was established way back in 1955. And all of that money is invested in CDs at local banks. Or at least most of it is. And there's a small amount that you see at the top. Those were gift stocks from patrons. Not stocks that we purchased, the stocks that were gifted to us. And because they tend to earn a higher rate of return than CDs, we've been allowed to keep them there. So the interest income that those CDs earn flows into the memorial fund. So if you turn your page back to the memorial fund, you'll see it. At the top, that $7,098, that's interest income on CDs. It came from the endowment fund. Any questions about that? Okay, moving on to cash reconciliation. That's where we're, we've got the balances of those four funds on the left. And then that shows you on the right where that money goes. And a big majority of it is at local banks earning interest. Down at the bottom, the rental house. We took in rental income in the amount of $9,000. You can see the expenditures. We were left with a balance of $12,770 at the end of the year. And that credit card account is for people who want to pay their library fines and fees using their credit cards. Now, we're getting, that takes care of all the money side of things. Now we're looking at the collection, library collections. And as you can see, there are many of them. Those collections have grown more than they really ought to. We need to do some weaving. And we're starting to weave books on CD, adult fiction and adult nonfiction. On the youth services side, we're in the process of weaving juvenile fiction and young adult fiction, where we've seen the most growth. Because the goal is to practice steady-state collection development, both for the sake of keeping our insurance premiums level and also for the sake of paying. and also for the sake of patrons being able to find things on shelves that are not too crowded. You can see that downloadable audiobooks have grown. That's something the state does. They have a panel of librarians who select what's going to be available in downloadable audiobooks. And that has been growing from year to year. But they pulled back a little bit on the size of the eBooks collection. Now, if you go to the last page, this is where the rubber meets the road, and you're looking at usage. And big picture, despite the fact that we had a plague, I looked at the libraries that are in communities that City Hall views as comparable to Fairfield. And I have a list of 12. And I believe that we're the only library in any of those communities that offered services uninterrupted during the whole of the year. So we ended up with usage, total circulation, at about 60% of what we had in the prior year. We never actually stopped serving the public, but we adopted more labor-intensive ways of serving by doing curbside delivery services and so on. And even though we had about 34% of the prior year's traffic in the building, we had 88% of the program attendance. And that's because we did a lot of Zoom presentations. Even though people weren't coming in for a while, we were reaching out to them by doing these virtual events. And we had about 66% of the programs that were offered in the prior year. So you'll see an uptick in the use of downloadable audiobooks and eBooks down at the bottom. There were quite a few people who learned how to do that from home, who weren't into it before the pandemic. And I'd like to open for questions.
So the laptop rental. So if someone could come in, just use their card, no collateral, take a laptop home for what period of time?
There is a deposit that's required, because they're expensive laptops.
That was my question.
We do, we do require a deposit. I think it's $150. And people can write a check and leave the check with us, and then we take an inventory of all the components that we loaned out. And then they, when they return it, we hand them the check back.
And what's the, what's the full length that they could take it?
Most people are doing it just for two or three days at a time, because they can come in and use the public computers now. We also have a public laptop that they can use in any of the study rooms. So the study room usage has really picked up. And some people are using the public laptop in there to do business or whatever.
I want to commend you on staying open continuously. My mom is in your position back in my hometown in Ohio. And they just up and closed for a long time to the public.
Most of them did. Claudette and I were the only two people in the building for a while there, because staff were furloughed. And then when they came back, they all started getting busy with curbside deliveries. One major change is that many people, over the course of the year, learned how to place the hold requests online. Instead of calling us and saying, you know, we want this and this and this and this, which can take a long time on the phone, we started teaching them how to do it with their computer at home. And we used to come into work and see maybe four or five hold requests. It ballooned. We got to the point where we'd see 90 hold requests when we came in and were in. So a lot of patrons learned some new skills.
I think it's, it's probably the future trend is more of this downloadable type stuff. And people coming to the library, maybe not to check out a paper book, but to actually just get on a computer.
Yeah. I could talk for an hour about that.
I'm sure you could.
Rebecca. On your first page, your library fees, fines, lots of damage, you know, looks like, as you know, we collected about half of the previous year, and certainly it was way less than what we had budgeted.
Right.
Do we, do we think we'll catch up on any of that? Or are we writing things off? What's the strategy there?
At this point, the policy hasn't changed at all. It's just that usage is down. You know, the pandemic has definitely had its impact as far as usage, overall usage. And I'm racking my brain for ways to entice people, you know, to come back. And September will be library card signup month. So we'll be working that in hope.
So as far as really unpaid debt, that hasn't changed much, you're saying, from previous years? Kind of outstanding people that didn't really pay their fine.
I'll go so far as to say that there is a trend nationwide in which libraries are forgiving fines and eliminating the whole concept of fines. And I know that our board is taking a look at that concept. But to do it across the board, big question mark, you know? Does it make sense to do it with the youth services materials? They're going to be looking at that, discussing it.
When my dog ate my book, I had to pay.
Yeah. There is a TED Talk that I can recommend called Fee or Free. I could send you a link. And there's a lot of data in there about the pros and cons of the topic.
I'll look it up. Great, thanks Rebecca. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks Rebecca. And again, thank you for all your extra work this last year. I know a lot of extra exercise going in and out of that building to deliver, to deliver. So hopefully there was some benefit, right?
Yeah, some of us were wearing Fitbits, just kind of checking in with each other. Oh, I've got this many, you know?
Probably got your 10,000 steps in a day. Okay, so we will move on to resolution amendments and ordinances. We got Melanie ready to go to talk about our change orders on the ways of our treatment. So I'll just go let you go ahead.
Yep. So we have three change orders for you tonight. The reason why 38 and 39 are not on there is because those are within Aaron's limit. One was a decrease, and one was within Aaron's limit to approve. The reason that we have this, I guess, group of change orders is as we get towards the end of the project, we're just cleaning up some different items. Your first one, number 37, is a minor piece of equipment that just happens to be right over the 15 draws and mark that Aaron's approved for. If you are concerned about the overall budget before approving these, there is a summary attached to the agenda. And under the third action item, Jason, if you would.
I clicked on it. It's just taking its time.
Okay, that's me. Well, after all, if all of the change orders in front of you pass tonight, plus all of the work that we are continuing that we have left, we still have around $200,000 left in the budget. So I would recommend approval.
And by the budget, basically, we're spending down grant money.
Correct. We're getting very close to spending down grant money.
But the idea is that it's there for us to use. If we don't use it, we lose it.
Yeah. And for example, the excavator for the altorfer that was on your claims was an excavator that we worked very hard with USDA to get an excavator that would be very useful at the plant, that had a longer digging arm than what they currently have, which would help with some of their bigger structures. And so we got USDA to approve the purchase of that equipment that we needed to buy anyway, but we got it worked into this project in order to use the grant money. Similar how we did the ADA project here, but we've been working on purchasing additional equipment.
Great, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to do this change order number 37, and it's an increase of $15,123.34. So moved by Anderson. Second by Hamm. Any questions, discussion? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you, approved unanimously. Second change order, number 40, that's an additional $16,065.
And this is for inspection of one of the sludge storage tanks, which after the inspection, we decided that we would use some of the remaining grant funds to replace it. But this work is already done, so we recommend approval.
Motion to approve change order number 40. Moved by Anderson, second by Toohill. Any other questions or discussion? Please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you, approved unanimously. And now change order number 41. This is an additional $30,414.
Yes, and a lot of our contracts, particularly like our street and our water projects, we pay for what is actually installed, because so much underground is unknown. You don't know how many tons of rock. You could be off on your rock a lot. And so these are the items that we have unit prices for, so that whatever we put in is what we paid for. And it's rock, concrete, bollards, different things that were at more of a unit price. So that is a net of $30,414.80.
Motion to approve. So moved by Anderson, second by Gandy. Any other discussion, questions? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a resolution to designate authority on a credit card. Rebecca, you just want to give the lowdown on that.
We had some new credit cards issued. And in trying to get information on them, Denise was unable to because she was not authorized to speak her, nor was I, nor was Aaron, nor was Connie. So we're just trying to update all that information.
Who whistled it?
Ed Jeffclawson joined us.
Good work, hearing.
Right.
So this is just updating the information with the bank so that these people can all get it.
Yep, basically, yes.
So make a motion to approve that.
Motion to consider designation of credit card authorities.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Hamm. Any other discussion, questions? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is a public hearing regarding the financial part, basically, for step three. Melanie, do you want to say anything about that?
So typically, we would do a presentation on what step three all includes. But we were, we were rushing this because we wanted to get out ahead of the census numbers in case the city came in at over $10,000. That is the mark when we are or are not eligible for USDA funds. The numbers came out this week, and unfortunately for the city, but fortunately for this project, we remained under $10,000. So we would still like to proceed with the application with future discussion on step three. More detailed discussion in the future. Step three is starting on the west side, sewer conveyance improvements. The entire west side of the community flows to Grease Lightning Lift Station. This is where a lot of our overflows on the west side of the system are located. And so the project includes replacing that, or I should say adding larger pumps to handle the high flows. And then a larger force main from there to the east side, or to step one, to, again, to handle those wet weather flows. The drive, the normal flows are handled very well, but the purpose of our steps is to eliminate the overflows during the high rain events. Later on, you'll see that the resolution is for it not to exceed an amount of $15 million. Right now, estimates are around $11.5 million. But we thought we would just round that up to make sure that we're covered in the application process.
So I'll open the public hearing now. And Rebecca, is anyone there?
No one out here.
No one discuss the public hearing? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. And we will move on to the resolution. Again, this, this is authorizing the city administrative clerk and the mayor to sign the loan and grant documents.
Not necessarily loan, but application.
Application.
So I move that we authorize seven individuals to sign the application.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other questions? I mean, to me, the first one says that we're, that you're authorizing to be able to sign those documents. And the second is to be able to apply for the financing. Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay. So any other questions, Michael?
One question. I remember when we, before we started step one, there was a...
I figured so.
Well, yeah, because I can't remember if it was three or four that we weren't sure we needed to do.
So it was three. Well, it was three and four.
Okay, because I thought when we did one and two, we were going to check to see if we eliminated enough SSOs to make the DNR and EPA happy. So we're not quite done with two. Or it's not really put in place very long. So what's, besides the census concern, what's the impetus that we should move forward right now with step three, rather than wait and see how step one and two affected the system?
So step three is on the west side of the system. Step one and two are on the east side of the system. Our reasoning for thinking it might not be needed is that about five years ago, Sean found some very large infiltration spots on the west side. He found those after our first flow study. So then, a year ago maybe, we hired McClure to do a second flow study only on the west side to see how those improvements helped. And they helped, but not enough to keep us from needing to do the project. And so other than the grant application, the other reason we're going, we need to keep moving forward on this is we do have an EPA compliance deadline to finish step three by December of '23. And so if you're looking at a year and a half construction window, we're, we're already going to be pushing it. So we do want to proceed.
Thank you for explaining that. Paul, can I, can I make a motion to approve this?
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who did that?
I made the motion.
Flornoy. Oh, Flornoy and Gandy. Okay, right then. So no additional questions? Okay, call a roll. Okay. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
And then the last resolution, authorizing same people to apply for financing up to $15 million for a year of, or a term of up to 40 years.
Move to a follow-up of the application.
Second. Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other questions? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hally?
Yes.
Okay, the only thing that I have under the mayor's report is to replace Alita Monnet at the DEI committee. Susan Metcalf has raised her hand that she wants to participate, and that she has already been to a couple meetings. And so I would like to have a motion to approve this replacement on that committee.
Motion to approve placement of the university hyperunion inclusion committee.
Correct. Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, approved. You will notice in there minutes that, and we've been talking, we want to get them here to... to kind of give us an update on some of the things that they've been doing and studying and looks like now that that's been pushed back a little bit further to November when they can get a big part of the committee here, they, and so hopefully this fall we will hear from them personally. City Attorney Report, John, do you have anything?
I do. Don't want to get the closed session stuff mixed up because I could.
We'll stop, we'll turn your mic off.
We've had a couple of things going on and one of them, Beck and I were just talking about earlier tonight, there's a group of people in the community that they're entitled to their opinions, they believe there's a shadow government that's called the sovereign state. And so they occasionally put their heads together and they invent paperwork that I think is either a slander of title or it's a misrepresentation of something they try to pass off as tender or martyr. And we got some cut and paste things that had a label on it like warrant for voucher forsaken or something like that across the top. And then several different pieces of other legal documents assembled with scotch tape and then notaries from a lady named Vera Rhodes, I'll just say her name because she's been through hoops on this a lot and gets turned into our utilities group up front as something that I think is intended to confuse them as far as whether it's actually a payment of some kind or it's intended to avoid payment, put them on notice that they're claiming they don't owe it. So I've gone to the extent, and I'm going to continue to do this, and I'll probably come back to you and ask you if you'd like to have me file charges against some of these people. I think part of it varies depending on what they're saying in the document and the bounty of what's at stake. But if they've got several hundred dollar utility bill and they turn one of these in and they don't pay the bill, the first thing we've decided to do is turn off the water. So that's going to happen, but we're also going to put them on notice that they're probably violating about four or five things in the state code that fall under either false pretenses or simulating legal documents. And these are either a misdemeanor depending on the amount or a felony depending on the amount. I had a conversation with the county attorney last week about handling it this way. He said he never heard of such a thing and I said, well, I'll send you over a couple of examples, then we'll talk about things that used to exist before the legislature changed some of this in the last twenty years and kind of cleaned up the false pretense part of the state code as far as the way they define some of these crimes that used to have their own place. Now, the false pretenses part of the state statutes, about thirty separate subparagrapths that defines just about everything that goes on in people's pockets on this. So first of all, as far as our water department and our utility billing and so forth, when somebody comes in and hands off one of these cut and pastes, I'm expecting, I'll probably get handed one of these every once in a while. And I don't know what the council's pleasure is if you want to have them come and ask you before we decide if we want to handle that in either magistrate court or district court or refer it to the county attorney for investigation. Those are all possibilities. Or we also, on the civil side, we can have it assessed and certified to be collected against the taxes or we can get a judgment against them civilly for basically ignoring the bill and then, of course, shut off the water. But have any of you had the experience of something like this happen at your business?
A gentleman called and then came in office today because they're having an issue with the lion and they wanted to sustain a self-sufficient with their energy. And I said, well, you don't have room on your lot for the solar array because of the city code. He said, we're sovereign. You might have mentioned a female name that you mentioned earlier. You use that sovereign title and I think maybe the trouble they're having with the lion is that they've tried the same thing with them, saying they don't actually owe them for the electricity they use. To clarify your question, aside from taking steps to get the funds they owe the city, are you asking if we should charge them criminally for attempting to?
Well, we have both routes available. We can pursue them civilly, which includes everything from assessment of taxes and putting it on your bill in the fall as something that pay in September to post those tax sales. That's probably the kinder, gentler solution. Most people don't want the property sold for tax sale, so sometimes during the year they'll pay their old utility assessment. After that, you can also handle it with a suit for the costs. They have a contract with the city when they're getting their utility and that's a civil claim, depending on the amount, it's either in magistrate court or district court. We usually don't let bills get to the point where it's going to go to district court, so that's another alternative. But the criminal side of it is, it's a little different. If you're over five hundred dollars as far as the game playing, you get to have a visit with the county attorney's office. Those become indictable offenses and they go up into district court. Then there's a whole array. The simple misdemeanor side of it as far as something that the city attorney would just file a uniform citation on and take it up in front of the magistrate is anything from a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. That happens to be the range of a lot of our water bills, utility bills and so forth. So if they play that game with us, I picked a lady's name as an example because she shows up on some of these as the notary or I think the person with the scotch tape. Other than that, we have a frequent relationship with Mr. Bell who turned in this particular warrant. And I sent him a letter, which I'll make sure I share with you guys about what's going on and it's what's been talked over to the county attorney. So we can go either direction.
Do we have to take legal civil action before we cut off the water?
No.
Okay.
Our ordinance says basically if you don't pay eventually...
Your water's...
We're not a turn in law.
Okay.
So can we just pursue the civil path and then refer criminal charges to the county attorney without deciding whether he wants to pursue it?
We can do that, sure.
That sounds good in the end, right, to me?
Yeah, the main thing is we're just trying to get paid. And the fact that they're clever in doing this kind of stuff, we've had this come up a few times in the past. When I was wearing the county attorney's hat, there was something going on back in the eighties and nineties where people were filing these things under an affidavit and they were saying that they don't owe anything. They were saying about things like county taxes and mortgage payments and things like that. And essentially, they were claiming a lien for the sweat of their brow. And these things got filed in practically every case where there was a land foreclosure going on or land forfeiture. And the opinions informally of other county attorneys and up in the attorney general's office, this is creating a slander of title. It's something that, it's not real, but to get rid of it, you have to file a quiet title action, basically. We sent several letters out telling people you can't file that. That's not the way the state code reads. State code reads, if you want to walk into the recorder's office and file something like this, you can actually do that all day long and the recorder can't turn you down as far as filing the papers. It's got a notary seal on it and it's acknowledged, it's capable of being recorded. So essentially, this latest invention, I tried to figure out if there was a way to call it counterfeiting, but it doesn't, I mean, it's so messy the way that it's being done that nobody would confuse it with something that's supposed to be lien standard, like a giant dollar bill.
Copyrights or logos that are protected or anything like that?
Right.
Because people who are creating these fake immunization cards are being charged with copyright violations, which is more seizing a government emblem and using it inappropriately.
Yeah, that's, I guess, another place where things can be referred, that's the US Attorney's Office or the US Postal Service has inspectors of those getting made. So there's a couple other possibilities too, but if we're just walking in and sticking it in our counter up front, we're the person that's going to have to directly respond to it, so. And I think there's going to be one, but so anyway, we'll see where that goes. I kind of have your sense that you prefer trying to do things civilly first.
Well, it's either that or I'm wondering if this is something we should send to Water Sewer for an official recommendation to the council? Because normally if we were going to shut off water, it would go through Water Sewer before it came down to us.
No, I don't think so.
I think they have a policy.
Independent rules about that.
We set the policy.
Yeah. If we shut the water off for failure payment, but this is a little bit more of an extenuating circumstance, I would say, do we want to file a criminal charge against these people? So we'll shut the water off anyway because they're not paying.
It seems as if that your first step would be to put it against their taxes if they're a homeowner. If they're not, then you got to choose something different. Now, maybe you want to skip that process, but like John said.
That's what I'm asking, so if they hadn't tried this odd way to avoid paying, we would have a process that we would use to deal with somebody who's just not paying. And so what I'm kind of getting from you is you want to see if we want to go a little bit harder because of what they did, call it a stunt. I call it unfortunate that they thought that was something to do. I guess I have a little more compassion for them to actually think that would work.
Yeah, because I think some of them actually do think they've really got something.
Exactly, so.
And I mean, I can't just send them a letter on city stationery that says, dear sir, this is ridiculous.
Exactly. So I just say go the normal route, not criminal, is my sense.
What was the policy that we, I don't recall exactly, for people for non-payment of water? What, we changed that a while back?
We changed the initial fee to be a little higher.
Higher.
Because so many people, instead of paying the final bill, just want to skip out. So we tried to make that deposit cover that final bill, but that's not exactly.
We didn't include a collection agency or something.
What's current policy on cutting the corners of that?
Did we hear a question?
We switched to a free one that added better results.
You need a resolution?
Rebecca, do you want to?
I need a motion. John, you need a motion?
I just need direction from it. If you want to make a motion, then you're fine.
I'll make a motion, then we ask the attorney to pursue civil course of action in these cases and if we think it rises to the program level, we can refer criminal charges to the county attorney.
Okay, and so does that mean you want them to skip adding it to their taxes?
No, the civil action would be adding to their.
We can do this certification for taxes regardless of the other stuff. I just, depending on what they're handing us, I think it's going to be a case by case. I don't know what clever phrases will get put in next, but I've seen two or three examples of different scenarios on this warrant idea. And if you read the squibs one by one, they sound like, yeah, that's kind of legal ease, maybe it does mean something. But I can probably go find some of the documents that cut that out and it doesn't have anything to do with valid payment.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it. I'll second.
Okay. Second back to the vote. Discussion.
Just to address Michael's point about it's unfortunate. It is unfortunate, but this couple have been doing this for a number of years and when the female party was living over here and then she subsequently lost her house to tax sales or something like that, but she was sending us the same doc or similar documents here, which of course we were saying, sorry, we can't take this as legal tender. And she said, they've been doing this for a number of years and being told no, this isn't acceptable. So now they kind of upped the ante and I think they put like a five hundred thousand dollar fine on the paperwork to try and again scare, show that this is legal. So I understand that it's unfortunate they think this is acceptable, but it's also something that city staff deals with that is kind of tiresome, so.
I have to assume that we're using them for a bit of staff time dealing with this too.
We've started to just forward everything to John.
And John's time.
And John's time, right. It's just, yeah, I mean, I've sent letters. Of course, because I don't have an oath of office, I'm no longer a person of authority in their eyes, so then now they've gone to Rebecca who, so it's kind of interesting. So it's just tiresome. Thank you for that back to the street. It was a repeat of thank you. That's okay. That's what I get for.
Yep, so Rebecca, you want to repeat the motion or Doug, you want to repeat your motion? So we...
Just to... Ask the city attorney to pursue a civil path of recourse on these issues and if the matter in his opinion rises below necessary, refer to criminal charging to the county attorney.
Great, thank you. So that's the motion on the floor. We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll have a couple of things in closed session, but the other thing, today I got emailed that our approximately twelve million dollar step two loan closing is now date certain for the twenty-second of September and we'll have a pre-closing, our city officers will sign the loan documents to finalize that on the twentieth of September. That's been bounced around from mid-September for a few days and the email was halfway lengthy from Sherwood Ice Little Development saying that USDA is going to keep these dates as the firm dates, basically to tell me what I need to do because there's about sixty-five parcels they have to have final title forms in before we have, you won't sign them. But the rest of the story is that USDA is waiting to see what the Senate and Congress do, whether one point four trillion is going to be it or something bigger is going to be it. If there's going to be a lot of money flowing, Federal Reserve will probably do something with interest rates. They're talking about it like there's still a possibility of that. And if that would be the case, this loan will get rolled back behind October one and they'll adjust it to a lower interest rate than we're getting right now, which is only like about one point three percent. So it's a pretty good deal for us with what we're going to sign that week in September, but it would be an even better deal if Reserve lowers the rate again. So we'll anticipate that we're going to have the mayor and the administrator signing most of these documents. They'll spend an afternoon signing. We've done this sit around table and sign thing a couple times for USDA in the last two or three years on the sewer conveyance and facilities project and so forth and it will happen in step three too. But anyway, I thought you should know that and probably there may be other news about it yet in the next couple of weeks, so keep your eye on Washington DC, I guess, okay?
Great, thanks, John. Great, thanks, John.
Good job.
Okay, committee and board reports, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met this evening. Present were all members of the committee, myself, Doug Flannoy, and Katie Anderson, also present was the city attorney, the city administrator, the mayor, and the city clerk. We had two items for discussion on our agenda. The first item had to do with designating, the DUNDA stated Designating Cares Act Fund. We corrected that to Designating Mayor and Rescue Plan Fund. Speaking of the federal government, federal government's allocated $350 billion to state, local, and territorial and tribal governments responding to the COVID-19 crisis. And we as a city have allocated approximately 1.4 million, 1.5 million. Recently, we received close to half that, approximately half of those funds. We have, as I understand, until fiscal year, in the fiscal year '24, to disperse those funds. So we began, we had an initial discussion this evening as to what to, or how to allocate those funds. Those decisions were made by the committee, but what we're recommending to the council is that we're going to distribute, we will have our clerk distribute to you a packet of information which describes the parameters of what we can do with the money. And it suggests that we have at our upcoming, yet to be scheduled, but upcoming workshop, we, council members discuss, and the public discuss what we might be able to do, or what should we do with those funds. That was our first recommendation to the council, and we discussed at a later workshop meeting. Secondly, we also discussed franchise fees. There's an issue regarding the franchise fees, and ultimately, I think we want to be sure that the franchise, or possibly a franchise fee of anywhere from 1% to 5%, be fairly allocated, and it was a suggestion of this council, of this committee, that we refer the matter to the Environmental Franchise Fee Committee, and they put together a summary of all these environmental franchise fees. We view it and recommend action to the city council with a goal of having a uniform approach to all entities that can be built. So that's at a later time, but that's our recommendation to the council, our second recommendation. We also discussed, apparently there's a letter to the editor.
Yes? Offices that can be built, so you're talking about the fact that nonprofits don't pay property tax, but they will pay a franchise fee?
No, actually, all of our franchises involved, whether it be Lisco, MediaCom.
The Bill.
The Bill, that's what you said, not Bill.
Bill, sorry, excuse me.
B.I.A.L.L.
D.
Thank you, sorry.
Heard Bill. All of the utilities that are involved in a, could be and are involved in a franchise fee.
So some of them are, some of them are not, being built as a franchise fee?
Yeah, that was on that committee, I remember, how should I say? Not advantageous to the city, they're just kind of there, you know, they're, there's no, we don't have any legal, there's no legal ratification of somebody doesn't like the fee they pay to any of those entities. We just have it on our records, so, anyway. Sorry, I misunderstood, Bill was Bill.
Anyway, our third item, we discussed, had to do with a letter to the editor by a certain, by someone questioning the city's ability to contribute to the sustainability coordinator position for Jefferson County, and we also discussed among the Ways and Means Committee, as well as those present, our understanding is we have authority over city attorney and others that we're on solid ground, and also one of the state auditors that we spoke with, we're on solid ground in our decision to contribute to that sustainability coordinator position in $25,000,000. There's no recommendation to the council as to that discussion, other than that you know we had a discussion. So those are our recommendations regarding ARP and regarding franchise fee. That ARP, we discussed it further, and you'll be provided with a packet of information from our city clerk discussing further, you know, a workshop, and as far as a franchise fee as referred to the franchise fee committee for further discussion and review.
So, sorry, what workshop are you referring to?
Work session.
So look at your calendars for probably October is my guess, maybe first November. The first meeting in September, we'll try to set a Saturday work session. So you can kind of look at your calendars for the next meeting, and then hopefully we figure out when that can be.
As long as we're clear that we can't make a decision at a work session, so it would just be just an open discussion, and then later.
Yeah, I think we're going to recommend that we're going to have, each council member's going to be provided this packet of information, and we'd like to have further discussion, think about.
Summarizing.
Yeah, so in September, if the committees would meet and brainstorm and think about, maybe we would want to spend it on this, that, we'll compile a list and, again, not make decisions in October, but just kind of have a list of suggestions and see, you know, where it goes from there.
This is a might be a loaded question, but is it possible to use the funds for regular expenses and place a property tax for other taxes?
This is our packet of how we consider it.
And I think that's one, you'll look, you'll find probably that's one of the things we can't.
Yeah, the answer to that, the answer to that question is a hard no.
So it's got to be a spell.
The three infrastructure things they are allowing right now are water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, and broadband. They're, my understanding is, is they're allowing emergency response or preparedness for emergencies in the future. There are also some other things where you, the city could grant to businesses or to essential.
Essential personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah, but yeah, that sets all, that's those.
Those are all the things that we need to discuss.
So they're rather strict, okay?
This one's much more strict than the cares.
The cares was very open ended.
Yes.
All right, thank you. You're on.
We're all going to go.
Yeah, that's our part of our recommendation that we can do happy. All right, and so.
All 47 pages.
And so that's our, that's our important.
Great, thank you, Mr. Danny. Administrator and department, who's up?
Don, why don't you go ahead and do your project update?
So we are, we are starting to wrap up a few projects, but the street projects are still in the thick of things. I got to meet our new radio personality on a day where things weren't going so well, so he didn't see nice Melanie that day, he saw, he saw construction Melanie that day. But anyway, so good news is there are some projects that are wrapping up. Step two is in the cleanup procedure, so again, I'll remind the public that if you were affected by that project, now is the time to let City Hall know if there are still some outstanding issues, whether the grading hasn't been done, we know seating hasn't been done, but if you don't like the shape of the yard after the contractor's been there, now is the time to let us know. They'll be seating in the next couple weeks. Morgan Street is a project that was done by City Crews, but that has finished. It was water main replacement on Morgan Street. One thing I will note about that project is because that is scheduled for replacement next year, we are not patching all of the concrete on that street, so that, you know, we're not wasting that patch, and it will be, the street will be entirely replaced next year. A lot of the excitement is happening on our bond package construction, which includes 23rd from Burlington to Tyler. The detours are working well, or at least that we've heard from the property owners in that area. But we did have a deal, or had, we had issues with utility lines this week, and a couple property owners were without phone and internet for a majority of the week. And this is really in the utilities' hands, but I would ask, or staff is asking, that the utilities committee looks at the franchise agreement. Right now, we're still looking for a copy of the franchise agreement, but we feel as a city that this is not acceptable service to our citizens, particularly the U.S. Postal Service, who was without phone and internet for a few days. Well, three days, they did get one line up, one of the three phone lines up and running. But as a city, we definitely feel, or we understand those property owners' complaints, but the best way to address, or the only way we have to address this is through our franchise agreement. So I would recommend the franchise committee look at that.
Is it inappropriate for me to ask what happened? If we talk about it after the meeting, but I'm trying to understand how it was Windstream's fault. It sounds like someone cut their line.
Windstream cut their line.
Windstream cut their own line.
Yeah, because I, you know, there could be things that we're not aware of. But the story that I'm hearing is that they didn't necessarily know the lines were there. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't have a map of those lines. And so we couldn't prepare for it ahead of time, and the Windstream kind of had to choose between holding up the project and putting customers without. Not a good answer there either way, which is why I think the franchise agreement, it's more, it's not to address this particular issue, it's just to make sure that we have clauses in our franchise agreement that do address what to do in that situation. And because, for example, our electric, I believe, franchise, it might be our gas, franchise agreement has specific in there that you have so many days to move, we have to give you so many days heads up, if we don't do that, you don't have to work as fast, and those kinds of things that they're contractually obligated to provide during construction projects. So that's really the whole thing of, it was a no-win situation, but we'd just like to lay the groundwork for better in the future.
May I ask how many people were left without internet and phone?
I can get you that after the meeting.
All right, awesome, thank you.
So on Fourth Street, that project is just a little bit behind schedule because of some equipment or some parts not being delivered. Those parts did come in late last week, so they'll be working on the sewer connections. Next week, they'll be looking at the concrete patching with the overlay happening the first part of September. So winding down on that project, but still not quite there. On 32nd.
When do you expect Fourth to move forward?
I'm not answering that question anymore because I've been wrong every time.
All right, but at some point, at some point, it'll be more than those two blocks.
Right, but so the overlay, because, one of the reasons why we are using asphalt on the two projects that we're doing this year, 32nd and Fourth, is because you can open up the road within hours of the asphalt going down. And asphalt, you can also construct one lane at a time a lot easier than you can with concrete. So in Fourth Street, we might have a day, or a couple hours, that Fourth Street from Broadway to the tracks is closed, but it'll be opened up that night, or it'll be opened up the next day. So the time period that the rest of Fourth is going to be closed is going to be very, very short. Like I said, the fourth, the one block of Fourth Street that is closed, every time we feel like we're getting to a point where we can open it, something else gets delayed, and we're not able to open it yet, so. They are still within their contract window, though, as far as how much time they were allowed to be working in the area. 32nd is, the patching is done out there, so we'll be waiting just for the overlay and the shouldering to be done. Looks like they'll be doing that after Fourth Street, so we'll be looking at around the second week of September. City Crews are still working at the alley at the post office. Council did approve for the temporary relocation of that box, but right now Crews have been able to stage things that, to keep traffic flowing through the alley, and try and decrease the amount of time that that box is misplaced. So right now, it is still in its same location. Merrill and Carpenter are completed, the only thing remaining there is the seating. So, again, that's another project that homeowners have, we haven't done grading yet, so never mind. I do have some concerns from property owners, I know they need to be addressed, so.
This is my last question, I promise.
No, I won't be.
Road striking, are we going to strike, or who's going to, is the DOT going to strike, or the contractor going to strike, our new?
Which one?
Pedestrian crossings?
Our contractor, on Merrill.
So that and the seating are left?
Yes, thank you. Okay. So the seating and the painting of the crosswalks on Merrill and Carpenter are still being. Okay, and then lastly, Fire Station Task Force is planning a meeting on September 9 at 6:00 P.M. We do have some preliminary layouts from the architect on the two different sites. And what the task force will be looking at is the different pros and cons of the layouts. There are, I would like to say that one of them is absolutely perfect, and that's the decision to go with, but there are definite positives and negatives on each site. So the group will discuss that, come up with any more pros and cons for the sites, and then ultimately make recommendations to council. And I think the Public Safety Committee, I think, is the one then, and will eventually get it to council probably in October for a decision on the council as far as the sites.
Where is the committee meeting on September 9?
To be determined, not sure if it's going to be more adjutant pitches to meet there yet. I need to work on that. We can't ask that question. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, as we talked before, we are going to set our fall work session. I would anticipate late October, early November for that. That's normally when we set our normal fall work session. Our city clerk and myself will get together and start to look where a good date for that is, and we will present that to you at the next council meeting.
If you want something on the agenda, please let Aaron know.
Yes, absolutely. Building Code meeting, we have set a Building Code meeting for tomorrow night with Mr. and Kim again. We invited the contractors and the landlords of the city to come and talk about how that a building code would affect them. This will be a presentation-style meeting, so there will be some questions, but it'll be primarily presentation from Jason Menazdol, the mayor, and myself will give some information also. Our plan is that it will be an hour and a half session tomorrow night at the max. We understand that there are some other folks that want to come and talk at this meeting. However, depending on time, we might just have to schedule another meeting for that discussion. So we're going to focus on the builders and the landlords tomorrow night.
And Aaron, may I add to that?
Go right ahead.
We discussed this today, and we just want the public to know that decisions are not being made tomorrow night or the next night. We know this is an election year, so decisions will not be made whether we move forward on this or the road we're going down, probably till after the first of the year when we have, you know, our council, a new council that's ready to work on this or not work on it. So we're still in fact-finding mode, and just reaching out to different entities within the community. And so this is just one more presentation, and again, there might be some other, it sounds like there's some other topics or concerns from the community, and you will have your turns, I just don't want people to get excited that tomorrow's in and that's all, you know. We'll set another meeting, and if we don't get to these other concerns, and there may be additional groups that we bring into. I mean, we haven't talked about that, but we'll see how it goes. I just wanted to let people know, it's not, you know, we're not making a decision in the next month.
We, the 2080, or the services agency, met last week Tuesday. There was a lot of disagreement, and on Friday, we were given a notice from the sheriff that all, basically all toiletries, soap, so toilet paper, paper towels, copy paper, water. Usage for like washing cars was now prohibited. Now, we have paid, and we pay our portion of all of those things, so we own a portion of those things that were taken from us. So there's an issue with that. We have had a discussion with another council member. We are trying to take a step back to listen. Or at least that's my direction to the police chief, it's my direction for myself, to try and understand their perspective and what the overall. to try and under, try and understand their perspective and what the overall sticking point from equitability is. I can't quite figure that one out, but I'm going to try and listen and figure that out. The, the issue on Friday is troublesome, but we as a city can address, or at least make it whole for our employees. But that's a problem with that one individual, and I, I, I'm going to refrain from calling it anything other than troublesome, I guess.
Well, the problem here is this person's elected, doesn't answer to supervisors, for example.
Correct. So we're, we're, we're going to have to address, I, I think, we're going to have to look at another mode of solving, resolving this issue than just sitting down with council and supervisors, whether it be mediation or arbitration or something, because it's, it's a difficult discussion. So just, just a heads up there.
Well, we made a proposal in letter to them in May. We are meeting here in June. On Tuesday, our last meeting, we scheduled another meeting for August 31st, which is next Tuesday, and they're supposed to bring a counterproposal.
So...
For 2080. So I'm not sure what that all means, to tell you the truth.
Do we feel like we have all the entities' information on what all the entities have paid for different types of expenses? Do we feel like that's out on the table, everybody understands? The city's been paying this, this, and this, the county emergency management, do we have all those numbers on the table?
Yes, I went to the auditor's office, and I got all the billings from the county that came to the city between July 1 of 2020 and June 31 of 2021. And I went through and itemized every single item, took a spreadsheet. Broke it down according to about the 2080s, but, put it together in a seven-page spreadsheet, gave it to everybody. And they act like they don't understand what it all means. I don't really understand what they're doing or what they're thinking. So hoping on Tuesday next week, we'll see something, maybe before that, something from them that's more concrete, and will give us some insight into their thinking. They don't want to approve a 22, fiscal year 22 budget for that building. Just what I basically did, I put together a budget for fiscal year 21, and I put in salaries for, projected for next year for 22 for the dispatch center. I said, this is close to fiscal year 22 budget, we're going to save. And they didn't want to touch it. I don't understand that at all. So I can bring that all here and show it to you, in case you have a concrete vision of what I'm talking about. But I put together all the 2080 expenses as outlined in the 2080 agreement, I went through it line by line, and the, all those expenses, the city is paying about 77% of the cost of the 2080, and the county is paying about 23%. 911 is kicking in $115,000 to buy equipment in the dispatch center, I guess.
Yes, the state code says it's supposed to be specifically for those things.
So no one's ever seen those numbers like that written out before? I think it's probably kind of a shock for people, some people just have a hard time dealing with it.
So those are expenses, you said, in the 2080 were even not necessarily what's outside the 2080, is that correct?
Well, actually, there are quite a few expenses that were in that, that were billed through the auditor's office to the city that were not in the 2080. I mean, some of them were quite substantial, $200,000 each. I mean, a lot, a couple dozen in separate category, and I asked them, we need to rewrite the 2080 and have all these expenses covered explicitly in the 2080, so it's understood. What happened was people were just billing what they thought was appropriate. I guess Dave Thomas would, I guess Dave would approve them as well. Another them were in a, in a brokerage expenses, they just weren't known to the city explicitly in the 2080.
And as entities, we weren't following what we brought up very well. Correct?
Right. I mean, that committee supposedly put together a budget every year for that building, where they put that agreement, and it's never been done before.
They also brought up that there are other capital expenses for communications that are not, that we, we don't know about yet, or we haven't seen yet. Now, we've asked, but they're going to, they haven't brought those to us. Supposedly, they're going to bring those to us, well, at the next meeting. So yeah, that would be this one.
Because my point to them was, we have a real problem with communications, whether it's our radios, their radios, this tower, that tower, what have you. And sometimes upgrades coming in from the companies aren't going to roll out, and we don't have any control, or that impacts. So I said to them, you know, you can't make any of our decisions that impact our budget without consulting with us. We can't make any of our decisions that might impact your budget without consulting with you, so we need to get that figured out. And I have this, how to use this word, this fighting that goes back and forth over these issues, needs to be done together. So let's have a bridge of course.
So the last comment I will have on this is, I have instructed my police chief to get along, I guess, play nice, and that, again, we want to, I want to understand where they're coming from. I'm, I'm okay with that. It doesn't mean I'm going to agree, or we as a council can agree, but we, we want, somehow we ought to come to a, we, we as a city aren't going to be the reason why this isn't going to get done, from my perspective. There's been a lot of rumors that we need to squash because the city is not going anywhere out of that building. I can't remember some of the other things, but we're, we're willing to sit and have a conversation and talk about it, and we're not going to have any ill will, I guess, with the conversation. And I hope that's reciprocated in the future. So.
Do you have anything else to add to that topic?
I don't think so. I mean, we've done a lot of work on our side to try and bring these on the table. We're just waiting for them to come back with some concrete, so we can find out where we have common ground, where we, where we don't, so we can start connecting the way of, so hopefully get something in writing.
Yeah, okay, great.
Heads up, a codification, we need to continue with the codification, we kind of took a break over the summer. Water and sewer, you're up next, just a heads up. Also, we're talking about paint. Our guy crews have been out and have painted as much as we possibly can on the streets and stuff. They can't get any more street paint right now. There's a shortage. So what we are doing as a street is the best we can, just, or streets crew, just to notify you, but there are going to be some things that aren't painted this year. All right, under, for now.
Thank you. Okay, so I will, our next thing is to go into closed session, so I will take a motion to go to close. By Anderson.
Second.
Second by Yandy. All those in, do I need to roll call that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. We will move to closed session, and so last, everyone lastly.